All right, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee. It is Monday, May 16th.
September 16th.
September 16th, 2024. We're in the Nashua High North Boardroom. I'd like to call this meeting to order. With us tonight, we'll do the role first, Ms. Gilio.
Here.
Ms. Prin.
Here.
And Ms. Lampier is here, just here. We also, we have Dr. Andreid, we have Assistant Principal, Mrs. Paris, and we have Principal Richard here to present us with some data, recent data from the high schools. Thank you for coming, and Dr. Andreid, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Claffey. As you said, we have Mr. Richard here and Mrs. Paris, who would lead us through a conversation tonight around our high school data. I think it's been a little while that we've kind of did a comprehensive review of our data to the Board of Education. So tonight, I'm really looking forward to a good conversation back and forth. I don't want to speak for them, but I'm sure they welcome questions as things kind of come up throughout the evening. So looking forward to this really a good conversation tonight. And it also goes into, I think, some of our policy discussion later on, on how often that we review and assessment data in curriculum evaluations.
All right. Well, thank you guys.
I guess I'll just, for those of you at home, the, this room is under construction, so we don't have the projector, we're looking at hard copies, and we've been told that the crew will insert somehow the data that we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for having us tonight, and thank you for Mr. Paris mentioning here, and we hope Mr. Burns, who is probably watching at home, hope he feels better real soon. So we have a lot of data we were asked to put together, and we can kind of go through each of these slides, so let's just feel free, if questions come up, just fire them right away. And we kind of put this in no specific order, but just kind of went through. So one of the first things we're going to look at here is our graduation rates, and what we put on this slide is last three data that we have. This compiled from the state for North, South, and also the state averages. You can see that North and South, actually throughout the data, you'll see that it's pretty interesting that we are very similar throughout, even though we're two schools, two identities. Nashville kids are Nashville kids, they're all doing a great job, and you'll see that the data from each school is very reflective of each other. You'll see our graduation rates are very similar to the state averages with regards to number of kids crossing that stage and receiving their diploma, and also our dropout rate is significantly, I feel, low for the large schools that Nashua has. I was kind of looking at some data, just looking at the last one there, 2023, about 3.3% dropped away. What was that? And that was like 15 kids. And if I were to, there's a story behind each one of those 15, I wouldn't want the public to think that that's just 15 kids who aren't, who we just kind of forget about. I bet you some of those kids are probably still on our rolls in adult ed. I'm sure that some of those kids are still being reached out to by our counselors and things like that. So this data is based on a four-year cohort, the number of kids that enter ninth grade, number of kids that graduate four years later. So I think if you looked at the number of kids that actually graduate and receive a diploma, whether that's a North-South diploma or an adult ed diploma, Nashua's doing really well.
Yeah, I would echo Mr. Richard's sentiments in that. I know our staff works really hard and diligently to get students over the line. I think one of the most rewarding things this summer, too, is seeing summer school graduation and the number of students getting across that stage. So those probably would have been in that dropout rate, but watching them walk across the stage, and having them leave Nashua was something rather than nothing is one of our goals. We work really closely with our counselors and outreach people, we work with case managers, the administrative team, and teachers to make sure students are leaving here prepared for life after North or South.
Good.
All right.
All right. Our next slide talks about where our graduates are going. There has been a change at North with our Directors of School Counseling. South, Mrs. Koochoo's been there for the last 10-plus years, so that's, we have a little data here. So Mr. Burns, when we were collecting this, Ms. Markcott had last year's data, so that's just why you'll see some NAs there. But again, four-year colleges, I guess, over 50% of our kids are heading off to four-year schools, two-year schools, 12%, 14%, 17%. So when you're looking at that, you know, almost 70% of our kids heading off to post-secondary education. Technical trade schools as well, you know, 3.8, 4, and 6.4. Add that on top of that, that's fantastic. That's also a big credit to our CTE programs, where our kids are getting hooked into something that they see as a post-high school career, and they continue that on moving forward. Military service, each year, we always have students heading into military service as a path for them, and you can see the percentages there. And none of our kids go right into employment, they don't know what's, what they want to, you know, if post-secondary is for them. Many of the kids that are in employment, I'll be honest, most of those kids have been employed throughout their high school careers, and they do a wonderful job. I think that we have done a better job in the past 15, 20 years, where college isn't the ultimate goal, it is a goal, it is a pathway, but you can see here, our kids are doing great. When we were putting this together, I had lunch with two graduates this summer, they sent a text to me, and Jovan and Antonio, and two kids I had by E block, I know, the principal at South. One went to trade school in Orlando, and he's back up here as a Honda technician, and Jovan is in the military, just got back from deployment in Poland, and both doing great. So I feel like years ago, there was such a push for us to get kids into four-year institutions when there's just a wider range of pathways for kids, and I am so proud of the work that Antonio and Jovan, the young men that they are, and they found their path, and they're doing great.
And I would echo that for North. If we look at our data from last year, about 70% of our students went to either a four-year college, a two-year college, a technical or trade school, and then the other 30% went right to the workforce. To echo his sentiments again, a lot of our students are working right through high school and then go into employment. So I think most of our students have a plan, they're going places and doing something with, with life after school.
Questions?
No questions.
And I just, it's nice that, living in the community, I see the kids afterwards, and it's just great to see that so many of our kids are doing great. I think that, you know, sometimes you get worried about a few, but for the majority, Nashville kids are getting a great education, and they're, they're surviving, and they're doing great. Sports participation, Heidi, I can speak for both, they're both similar trends, but as you can see, participation in sports is up, I think, a good five, five and a half points here from 2021 to last year, and in South, about an eight-point rise. I think getting through COVID, right, getting over that hump, getting through those types of restrictions that we had to play with through, things like that, I think we're kind of returning to a norm, and we're seeing a lot more students participate in extra cookers, and that's just fantastic, as we know. Any questions on that one?
If someone plays two sports, are they counted twice?
Yep, so you'll see participants and then number of students, so I think, if I'm looking at South.
Stupid question, sorry.
There's no stupid question, Mr. Claffey.
As a stupid people. Looked at this all day. Have the fees changed at all in the last couple of years for any sports?
I don't believe so, no. And I'm sure that would be something Mr. Ringus would love to have a conversation about. No. AP scores, this is fantastic, this put a smile on my face when we're looking at this. As you know, and Mr. Claffey is a longtime AP teacher, a three is the, is the gold standard to get, right? So if you're taking an AP score and you get that three, it's kind of like you met the proficient mark, obviously fours and fives are above and beyond. So if you look at the AP scores for Nashville South, this is a five-year comparison, we've had a little dip in 2021, again, that's the COVID era, but this past year, 87% of the tests taken were scored at a three or higher. Again, total AP students is 278, of those 278 kids, 455 tests were taken, and just AP students, 242 with a three or more. Fantastic. I know North has similar data as well.
Yeah, our data has also grown over the last five years. If we look at last year, of the 212 total AP students, we issued 313 exams, and 166 of those students scored a three or higher, which was 78%. So we've seen steady growth and steady enrollment, if not increased enrollment, over the past five years in our AP classes as well, so really great news.
Are the same AP classes offered at both schools, or are they different?
Yep. So the next slide there, we didn't list them out, but it shows the 18 different courses, and I imagine that 18 different courses are the same exact courses. So you can just see the number of kids enrolled in our courses. We did not delineate, the 540 might be kids taking multiple courses, Mr. Claffey, I just want to say that before the question arises. But we have currently 27 sections and 18 courses, so obviously some courses have multiple sections going on in the school, but again, 540 kids filling those seats, and 405 kids at North with 25 sections, and again, the 18, I'm assuming they're probably the same courses. What we will do, if there's enough kids to combine between North and South, we might run one course at North, just so that course is run. As you know, we have the shuttles going back and forth, so we do do that during springtime when we're looking at schedules and things like that. If we have six kids looking to take, you know, AP Micro and six kids over here, we'll combine them together to make sure the course runs, so the kids get that experience.
All right, next, CTE?
CTE, kind of talked about it earlier, just seeing the number, you know, percentage of kids that were heading into, you know, our technical program, trade programs, and just, when you look at this, it just talks about the robust program of studies we have at our high schools. When you look at those courses, it just kind of gets, you know, exciting, when you see what kids can do in our schools, it's simply amazing. We often talk in December with our sophomores, and we kind of say that, you know, starting next year, the program of studies really opens for you, you know, your ninth and 10th grade, we kind of tell you, these are the courses you have to take, you have a little wig of room, and then 11th and 12th grade, you really can kind of jump into different, different types of courses, and CT being one of those. As a parent of a CTE student, my daughter's enrolled in the Careers in Ed program, absolutely loves it, she's in Careers in Ed 2, I'm getting excited to see what her plan might be, where she's going to probably go out and work at one of the elementary schools this year. She's doing a community service, one of her blocks to work in the preschool, because she just loves it so much. So that is the highlight of her day, besides seeing me in the hallway. But no, it's just, it's a hook, and I think that, you know, as we're looking at schools this fall, that's what she's looking to get into, is, you know, education, a career in As you can see, and I'll just say, you know, there's different programs at each school, we also mirror some, but again, the, we bus kids back and forth.
Is this the first year for cybersecurity?
Second.
Second year, and how's that program doing?
Good. Again, it's just starting in infancy last year, so getting it feet wet and things like that, so this year, we have our first Cyber 2 course running, so Cyber 1 and Cyber 2, and that's a three-year rollout, so hopefully next year, we'll have Cyber 1, Cyber 2, and Cyber 3 rolling. So Mrs. Talbot, the new CTE Director, has been emailing with the Paradigm folks, who is our curriculum provider, because that is just a diamond in the rough, as they say, that, that is a field that they are just dying for employment, so we think if we can get that, that could become our niche, as Dr. Andreid calls it, Nashville could be the hub of the cybersecurity world in, you know, high schools, so. So again, a large number of kids taking CTE courses at the high school, and again, these could be kids taking more than one, but typically, you might not take more than one, there would probably be a handful of kids, just because our CTE programs are mostly year-long courses, so to take two out of your four courses as a CTE would be kind of tough to fit everything in, but we do have some kids that do do it. So again, at South, we have 775 kids enrolled in CTE classes, 85 sections. North is 581 kids, 59 sections. Those numbers also include area kids that'd be coming from our surrounding schools.
Oh, okay.
Another exciting opportunity, especially within CTE, is dual enrollment, where kids can get early college credit. We've been, and maybe Dr. Andreid can jump in here in a second, we've been working very closely with NCC as of late to really promote this, and at our open house, they came to speak to parents interested to hear about, it's kind of dual enrollment, they kind of changed their mantra to early college, because you can take it, you can go to NCC, take a class, you can take a course of ours that, after going through an audit process, if the curriculum matches, you know, our teacher could be deemed a professor from NCC, or there's actually online courses, and the price is right. So you want to jump in and talk about what we've been doing?
I think a little, the eye contact was going on, so this is kind of exciting, I was going to hand it over to you, but we've been meeting with NCC for probably the last six months, and some of the data that, from the NCC part, is with the dual enrollment, is often a lot of students who end up at NCC are in the two-year program, who qualify for financial aid, actually run out of financial aid before they actually attain their associates, because they have to take either remedial classes or different type of classes. Some of the dual enrollment programs that we offer are college-bearing credit, so we're actually having the conversations on how do we work with students in like their, in 10th and 11th grade, and look at what are the remedial classes that they're taking at the college level, bolster up our curriculum so that they don't need the remedial classes, or start offering those classes earlier on, that students are, who didn't see a pathway to a two- or four-year college, are actually accruing college credits in 10th and 11th and 12th grade, which will actually see those numbers go from $499 higher, because we're going to actually open up more possibilities for more students to take college credit earlier. NCC is happy, they're working with President Jordan, they have a moonshot project, they're, one of their big goals is actually to recruit more minority students, and so that's one of their big goals, and partnering with us, we'll be able to attain or achieve their goal and also benefit our students. So it's really exciting, as Mr. Richard said, there's three, three different pathways, students can actually take classes, whether it's hybrid, virtual, or in person, so it's really looking forward to moving forward. One of the things that we actually talked about in space-wise, on how do we have NCC office in the high schools, so that there's more resources for our families without going to NCC, so they've been an incredible partner, really thinking outside the box, so we see this $499 number growing, and for especially students who we can provide hope for about crossing the stage, or I'll never be a college graduate, if we can start this process earlier, and so that it's fiscally achievable for students, but also academically achievable, I think this is going to be a great program moving forward.
Is this the same as what used to be called college, what was, you could sign up for a class, a senior class, well, I'm trying to remember what that was.
Yeah, so.
Do you remember, you know what, you know where I'm going though, right?
Running Start.
Running Start, is this, is this running, the same thing as Running Start?
So it's a little bit of a combination.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's students who can easily leave the high school with almost an associate's degree, right? So there's enough dual enrollment classes, so those are going to be some of the conversations we're having. The traditional dual enrollment classes, as Mr. Richard said, is the professor or teacher at the high school needs a master's or that aspect of it, so there's certain requirements in order to achieve a college credit at the high school, but as Keith was saying, but there's also virtual classes that if we can't find a teacher, math is sometimes hard for the dual enrollment.
Yeah, so we're trying to find more of a program where, I think, Mr. Claffey, when you use their Running Start, often lived with the teacher, because the teacher had that adjunct professor, because they had a master in that area. Teacher leaves, program leaves.
I was just wondering if that would still be an offer too, but it's tougher to.
We're trying to solidify more of a systematic way to allow these opportunities to happen for kids.
But we're hoping, again, if students can leave with one year of credit, you know, or one year of going into college as a sophomore, we know, having two kids in college, I know how much it costs, so if we can save 30, 40, $50,000 for some families, and they're walking away with credit, or students who will go into the two-year, in a two-year institution, that if they don't have to take remedial classes, that they're further ahead, and financial aid will benefit them.
All right, course recovery, credit recovery, so this is one slide, and Mrs. Lesser, our Director of Adult Ed, does a great job with data, and if you're looking for more data on that, I'm sure we could get that to you, but this was just kind of a snapshot of the stuff that she provides for us. So in our grading practices, and this was students who did course recovery, so if, I'll give you a little, so with our competency-based system, say a course has three competencies, you have to get a C- or better in each competency to earn credit. If you're missing one of those, you get what's called an NC, no credit. So instead of having a student who showed a level of proficiency in 66% of the class, but just missed out on a third, we don't have that kid just re-enroll in the whole class again and have to do the whole 90 days. They have an opportunity where they can focus on that one competency, and that's what our credit recovery, competency recovery program is. So here, she illustrated the number of kids that took advantage of it, most of the kids who do take advantage of it are successful, because they knew a lot of the material, they just needed some added support. She puts in all the kids that are eligible for it, that's the top line, some kids do not take advantage of it, one is, there, you know, there could be some barriers, it is an after-school program, so if a student has ever arrived, things like that, that's going to happen. There is a small cost to it, which some kids might just think, I'll do it during the summer, or I'll just retake the course. But you can see at, you know, for South, 36 kids in the spring took an opportunity to do that, and 33 of them were successful. So those kids were able to recoup credit and move on, instead of having to go back and sit in that class for another 90 days after showing a level of proficiency.
And then for North, similarly, a smaller number of students, but 22 enrolled and 20 completed, so about 91% of our students who took advantage of that opportunity passed and earned the credit.
And that's offered at night?
Yep, so usually after school, it's through adult ed, so typically 3 o'clock.
After school, yeah, okay. All right.
Ooh, SAT. So now we get to the SAT data, so we did two years' worth, I know there's a, it kind of gets into a few slides here, but I'll kind of walk us through maybe the first couple here, and then if you have questions, feel free to ask. So looking at the SAT data, South 2024, reading and writing, this is what we get from the state after our students, their scores are submitted, so for example, the school would be South, we had 290 students take the SAT in the spring, 57% of them met a benchmark, exceeding a benchmark, 6% of them were close, 38% did not. So 57% of our kids would be deemed proficient in reading and writing. The district, the level would be 58%, is where Nate and I always look, you know, if that number's higher, then I know he did better than me, because only two schools to average together, but you can see that, one thing though, is we're very close to the state average on a lot of these things, a lot of these test scores that we'll look at, and then if you compare us against the US and global testers, we do pretty well compared to the nation and globally. So again, that is our reading and writing scores. North scores, again, grade up 61%, so you know, they were one point behind the state. Public schools, now looking at, the private schools is the next column that would add all the schools in, and again, North had an eight-point lead on all US, in US territories, and an eight-point lead on global testers, so when you look at us globally, doing pretty Math, similar stories again here, and at, well, South and North, we had 26% of our students meet the benchmark with a 6% performance level, reaching, the state was at 30%, and then US Territories, 27, 27, so we're kind of like right there, notch below the rest of the US and the global by a percentage point at South, and then at North, 23% as a school, and then, you know, Territories is getting the same numbers, but those were South's scores. So these were last spring, not that I have to walk through, but then we also provide you guys data for 2023 administration, for reading and writing for South and North, and the 2023 administration for math for North and South, and I believe I looked at it this earlier, just, you know, very similar numbers again.
I was looking at the actual benchmark range, and I don't know if we're going to, if we were to present this to the whole board, I'm looking at one page from the, I guess it's the College Board, but maybe if you guys could add just the last benchmark, not the, I know they have 9th, 10th, 11th, but the last, the very one at the top, I'm looking at, I'll send a screenshot, but if you could just add that, so we know what a bench, everyone knows what a benchmark is.
Benchmarks, I guess.
Cool?
Yep, send that to me, that'd be great.
So I think I know the, I don't think I know the answer, I know the answer, but obviously, a lot of accomplishments at both high schools. What do you attest the growth, the student successes? What are two or three indicators, like, we always talk about leadership moves, that the both schools have made over the last couple of years, that to improve student outcomes, achievement, what do you think can be attributed to some of those great outcomes?
I speak for yourself, and I'm sure North's going to be, again, Mr. Burns and I are on the phone multiple times a day, just, you know, if I have an idea that thinks is good, I'm going to share it with Mr. Burns, Mr. Burns has a good idea, he's going to share it with us, because we think, we both are looking out for Nashville kids. We have a great, healthy rivalry, but we both believe that, you know, if something's good for a student in Nashville, it's, you know, best for all. So I know in this school and at South, relationships, number one, kids have to walk into school knowing that they have adults in front of them that trust them, that are going to push them, that are challenging them, that get to know them. I've always told people that the biggest secret in education is relationships. If a kid has belief in you, and that you're going to stand behind them, you can push them to do great things. If they think you don't believe in them, why even try? Two, the opportunities in our two buildings are amazing. I tell people that all the time, often you hear, the world of education always feels on the firing line, it's always, you know, a negative thing, a score comes out, you know, and it's, but walk our halls and talk to our kids, talk about the things they're doing, it's simply amazing. Look at the CTE programs we just put up there, look at the AP scores of both of our schools, I would put those scores up against any school in the state, but put all the data up, you know what I mean, put the good and the bad, but all the data against any of these schools in the state, and Nashua's doing really well. So our opportunities that we have, the staffs in both building, and I think we get creative. I think we have found different pathways to graduation for kids, it's not a one-size-fits-all in our buildings, it's really not. You know, they start out their freshman and sophomore years finding their ways, and then when they find their niche, or they need to go left, or they go right, or sometimes they have to go backwards to go forward, we're there, and we make sure it happens. So there are some crazy transcripts out there to get kids across the line, and it's great, because it's personalization.
Yeah, no, I like to say, it's up on the wall, like, we're creating 10,000 gateways to opportunity, and I think both high schools are doing that, they're personifying that slogan. You alluded to just being really creative, I think you, both high schools have a culture of doing whatever it takes to get students across the line, so there is a culture of You mentioned it as well, but also the culture of teacher empowerment, and we have incredible department leaders that you also give a lot of voice to and follow their direction, so I think there's a lot of grassroots movements coming up, there's a lot of teacher voice and agency as well, so I think there's just incredible cultures, and it's not only student-adult relationships, but the adult relationships as well, so. So a lot of great work going on in both buildings in the CTE program.
I was wondering, I can't remember before COVID that well, but it's, I think there were some SAT review programs that teachers offered in English at South. And I was wondering if there are any plans to continue doing that?
You're right, it probably, yeah, since COVID, because we were bringing kids in Saturdays and things like that.
Yeah.
So that's something we probably could look at to review.
I was just wondering if you were, I'm not saying you have to.
I think we've just been still getting over that barrier.
Sure. Ms. Julio.
I just had a question and these look great. I mean, I'm happy to see that the Nashville students are doing fine compared to global U.S. and the territories and state. I'm just wondering, in the meet succeeds benchmark area for all of those, not just for us, but globally even, are those percentages kind of small? I mean, if only, say, 25% of the students who take the SATs meet or exceed benchmarks and only like 6% are approaching them. I'm wondering if this looked like this, say, 10, 20 years ago? And this is, you know, our kids are doing great. I'm just wondering globally, are a lot of kids taking the SATs who really just aren't prepared for them or they take them just because they're expected to or, you know, because it seems like, I would have expected when I looked at this today by my swimming pool, I would have expected, you know, higher numbers in the meets and exceeds expectations box, all up and down. So I don't...
So I would say the numbers probably would have been higher years ago because only students signed up and paid to take them.
Correct.
Now every kid in high school takes it as a state assessment.
Okay, oh, great, okay. Yeah, I didn't realize that. That's good to know.
Yeah.
Before it would only be a student who was interested in going to college and wanted to have those scores.
Right, yeah. No, that makes a big difference, thank you.
That's been a huge change, so, exactly the point.
Yeah, I get it. Thank you.
Was that your last slide?
That was it.
Further questions?
This was wonderful.
All right.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for coming, making time for us and your comprehensive presentation, we'll pass along the highlights at our next full board meeting.
And if you go mind sending me where you were thinking with the benchmarks, do you want me to try and add it into this?
I think just print it out, just so people, I just looked, I was just curious to know what the benchmark is, kind of like what they used to say is the average and it's 480, 520, but...
Oh yeah, the numbers.
But then they give you the range because people might, especially parents of students who are looking colleges. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys.
This was wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
I wish I could get into my thing because we're going to talk about the policies, right? And we don't have anything in front of us.
Want to borrow this?
I have enough juice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you able to bring up the policies on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to share with you.
I'm going to still try to, one more time to get into it here.
Thank you, guys.
You have a problem?
All right.
Yeah, I didn't realize how dependent I was on the screen and I've been having trouble with my iPad, so I decided, oh, tonight I'll just bring my laptop because I'm so well-versed.
I was happy Mr. Richard actually had an adapter. I brought the wrong adapter, I had like 2% power. So it was the same thing, I had no paper.
Thanks for the hard copies, too. That was a...
Thank you, yeah.
Save me because I...
Bye.
Take care, good luck.
Thanks. Bye. Nice to see you, see you at the next meeting.
So next on the agenda, we have three policies that have been in our queue. They were referred to us by the policy committee. We had a brief conversation in this committee about those and I, looking at IL, it's the first in our packet, I see IL has some proposed changes, some edits.
Yeah. So the proposed edits actually came from the policy subcommittee coming to us to review. Just in IL, the new lines, actually I would, I don't like from time to time.
Yeah, I think it is more specific. No, that's so vague.
Yeah, right. So, and there's an aspect in that line, it says just for the general audience, the superintendent will from time to time report to the board on the progress that the district is making toward the attainment of its educational goals and improvements, student performance. The last part's good about, you know, having a report. I actually, like the, what's stricken from the original is annually. I actually would prefer an annual report. I'm really used to like doing a state of the state and having a night in front of the Board of Education and saying, here's our scores, especially when we get the SAS results, we can look at our AP and we look at overall, what's our standardized assessments and we have one night that's really talking about the state of the state. So the language here, I would actually almost go back to the original language, saying we put out annually and then it's about improving the student performance. And that, quite honestly, the should, if I was looking at a calendar, should be right around budget season.
Yeah, that's good timing, yes.
And it's really about, you know, the story on why our budget is a good return on the taxpayers' investment.
100%, yeah.
So do you have a specific statement in mind or wording in mind that you'd prefer for us to send over to the policy committee?
So I would actually, I mean, the superintendent, it goes back to the original language.
Annually.
So I would strike out will, will from time to time, to go back to, the superintendent shall have the responsibility to report annually.
Yeah, I think that's good. From time to time could leave us with the superintendent who's here four years and never reports on it.
Yeah, or no one reviews this, you know, this document. And so we wouldn't be out of compliance if it was every 10 years, which is...
Yeah.
A long time.
Would you be in favor of keeping what's added at the end of the first paragraph?
I think that actually goes into...
ILBA or...
Yeah.
It's policy.
Yeah. I just, I was wondering whether IL and ILBA are kind of redundant. And if we were to add something about reporting annually to ILBA, would that retain the intent of IL? Because I just, I don't, maybe I'm missing something. I just didn't, when I, here.
I think you're 100% correct.
So if I were going to make a recommendation without consulting with you guys, I would ask them to consider getting rid of IL and maybe inserting something about reporting annually, but...
It's ILBA.
ILBA is much more robust.
Yeah.
It is.
And then, I was just going back and trying, I'm trying to find in ILBA, the annual recording Or where would we insert those, where would we insert those, that phrase? So I think the last section, interpretation, which is on the second page, the first, oh, the first sentence does say at the end, at least annually, so... Again, it might be redundant. Can we, would you, how would you all feel about recommending to the policy committee that we just scratch IL?
And just stay with ILBA?
And stay...
As long as it's got the annually, you know, word in there. I think so, that would be great.
And IL hasn't been approved for 16 years, which tells us something. All right, so we, I don't know if I have to make a motion or we can just report to them. Is that fine with you?
It's fine with us.
Dr. Andre, are you okay with that? We'll just...
100%.
I think that makes sense.
All right, and if you happen to meet with Ms. Raymond before then, tell her that's our recommendation and...
Absolutely.
And then BDEC, I believe is the last item. And this one, I think, was created because every committee has kind of a stated mission, goal.
Oh, that's right.
I didn't see any problems with it.
I think it was Mr. David.
And I'm trying to remember whether in the past year or so, we've had any issues that the current wording would have addressed or prevented. I guess, would you like to see any changes to BDEC?
No, I think it's open enough in, I think in full transparency, we heard a lot over the last couple of years on just the number of programs that were coming in, how were they being adopted, were they coming before the board? So I think it's just more in the, whether it's professional development and so it's really reinforcing that it's the responsibility of this committee or the administration when we're making major changes, that it's presented to this committee first before we adopt new programs, especially around curriculum decisions, what's the data, what was the process, how did we come to those decisions, what PD is going to be offered. So again, I think the purpose of BDEC, for us to review it, is to reinforce what should be the process when we're adopting new programs.
Right.
Which, again, if you look at BDEC and the conversation around ILBA, they actually go hand in hand. So we should be looking at student achievement scores, right? If there's a gap, what's not working, what's our needs assessment, and then coming back to this committee to say, this was the process if we're looking at new resources.
Just curious about number two. The committee will make recommendations to the board. Oh, it's to us, okay, to the board. Okay, so I guess that's fine. That's just, if we hear from you or someone else...
In every year, right around January, the high schools come with the program of studies and the board approves and it's usually, what are the new offerings? Are we changing any graduation requirements? So that goes on on a yearly basis, mostly at the secondary level.
And I remember that happening. I mean, and those presentations are usually very enlightening.
Yeah.
So that's something that we have been doing. That's a good thing.
So is everyone okay with BDEC as it stands?
Yes.
And we're unanimous in saying that IL can be removed?
Yes.
All right?
Yep.
And BDEC, keep as is?
Yes.
So that's it for our agenda tonight. Dr. Andre, do you have anything to...
No, just again, thank you for, we'll be trying to, again, each month, having more presentations. Next month will be the middle school, followed by the elementary. If there's data that you like to see, I mean, this was, that, from each level, if you can contact Mr. Claffey. We had a couple of email exchanges, kind of clarifying what data would be presented from the high schools. If we're looking for something specifically from the middle schools, we can give them a couple of weeks' notice now before next month's presentation. Will also be interesting, October is like just the beginning, so we'll look backwards, but there's also a subcommittee that's looking at middle school changes. So their first meeting isn't, their first meeting isn't for a little while, but they had their first kind of discussion on what types of things will they be looking at. We, obviously, six weeks in or eight weeks in in October, we won't have all of that data, but we'll have a general feel on where we are at the middle school. And again, if we follow this process, we'll have another middle school data presentation towards the end of the year.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of changes at middle school right now.
But we also want to make sure we're having conversations at all levels. What the high school presented tonight was yearly data, right? And we also know as educators that we collect so much data on a daily basis, that there's other data that we can look at. So if we have the high schools back later in the year, are we looking at attendance rate, are we looking at failure rate? You know, there might be other data, discipline rate. Even tonight, again, it was really high. We might actually go into it, I think, where, I thought you were going around, what's the data around our subgroups? Like are we seeing differences between, you know, if all students are testing, is a certain subgroup carrying the results or not? So those are things that I think we need to get deeper in.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, no, no, of course.
I didn't raise my hand.
Ms. Julia, you're next to me.
So you know I'm involved in another school committee in Chelmsford where I am the recording secretary and I know that their budgets are different than ours and they're a totally different community. But I saw an amazing presentation about six or eight weeks ago on a program they've been using, this is the second year, called Panorama. And have you ever heard of it?
Yes, yep.
It's amazing. I mean, it takes, it drills down from groups of students and scores, it gets you down to your, your each student in your class and where their deficiencies are, where they need to make progress. It kind of gives the teacher like, this is what student A needs, you know, these two months. It's probably extremely expensive, I'm not sure, but it, it's pretty, it was, I was very amazed at how much it can do to actually give the teachers the data that they need that year for those students sitting in front of them. And then in terms of privacy issues, they no longer have access to that data when the student is not there as the following year. So I just thought, you know, it might be worth looking at for the future.
Yeah, so there's a lot of in-house data reporting that we currently have, especially more at the elementary level. There's a lot more testing going on there. But we are able to drill down to that level of specificity...
Oh, good.
Currently.
Oh, good, good.
And so in our, a lot of our data meetings, they will pull up a program, whether it's DIBELS or I-ready data at the middle school. So we're able to really drill down by student EN standards to look at trends, so...
That's good to know, yeah. It must make the teachers' jobs just a teeny bit easier.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, I'd be looking for a motion.
A motion that we adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned at 6:49.